...a beautiful sight to see you all. Isn't this a wonderful community center, remodeled by the city? I think it's. I'm so happy to be here. And I want to acknowledge first of course the city of Mountain View, because they allowed us to use this beautiful community center. And thank you for remodeling it. Thank you for remodeling it. That was my pleasure. I think we're going through a period of time where people don't think anything good is happening. But it is, right here in Mountain View. And I think the community center is a wonderful story for the community here. They'll make very good use of it. I want to thank the mayor of Mountain View, Lisa Maticek. Lisa, stand up so everyone can see you. Margaret Abey Koga, she's the vice mayor of Mountain View. Margaret is, I really like, a daughter to me. When I was on the Board of Supervisors, she came interned. She was in high school then. And she interned in my office. Then she graduated from high school and went to Harvard. Graduated from Harvard and came back. And I was running for Congress. And she came and rolled her sleeves up. And then she worked in our district office. And then she got married. And then she had two children. And now she's the vice mayor of Mountain View. So she just keeps moving on. Lucas Rivera is the Mountain View City Councilman. Kavina Taka, Los Altos Councilwoman. Where is she? Well, if her name's on the list, you can applaud her. Another real favorite of mine is the vice mayor of Campbell, Susan Landry. She attends everything we do. And someone that does what I call God's work. Sherry Sager is the Chief Government and Community Officer at Lucille Packard Children's Hospital. And her work is absolutely magnificent. She travels to Washington on a frequent basis. All of her work is done in partnership with other children's hospitals in our country. We are so blessed to have Lucille Packard and the work that it does. It, of course, has the reputation that it has. There was a man for 25 years, Chris Dawes, that shepherded all of the magnificent changes there. Was responsible for the new Lucille Packard Children's Hospital. And we just lost him about 10 days ago. So Sherry, would you stand up so everyone can see you? Laura Casas, she's a board member of the Foothill De Anza Community College District. Where is Laura? Is Laura here? Laura, thank you for your work. I know that Patrick Aherns is here. He is a new board member of the Foothill De Anza Community College District. These are very important boards. It's kind of a mouthful, it's long. But they make all the decisions as to what the community college is going to offer, what employers in the valley need. And then they adjust to making sure that the training and the education and the certifications are there for good futures for people. And Lenny Siegel, former mayor of Mountain View, is here. Lenny, thank you. I think that we should start by pledging allegiance, don't you? Let's do that. Sherry, you want to start?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, everyone. So welcome to our town hall meeting. We're going to... The way we do it is what constituents think has worked the best. We go from one side to the other. My staff has microphones. You can fill out the card or you can stand up and ask your question. Very importantly, if I don't get to your question tonight, you'll hear back from me the longest in 10 days. But make sure you put on the card how I can get back to you. Either your email or your home address. And know that no one gets that email or home address. It's not on some list that's sold or shared with anyone. So know that that's our process. Let me just start out by maybe just a couple of comments, reporting back to you on two things. And then we'll open it up. And of course, some of the media people wanted to know how we did this. And I said, "My constituents ask about everything. And they are intelligent, they are well-educated, they read, they think, they analyze." So no one is going to politically manipulate the people that I represent. I have the honor of being part of the official delegation representing the United States House of Representatives for the 75th Commemoration of Normandy. And so it was the largest delegation I've ever... I think it probably was the largest congressional delegation in history. There were 60 members. And that is... A large delegation is 10. So we traveled to France and went to Normandy. And of course, the 75th is a big one. And it was summer. It was... Let me just tell you what my impressions were. And that is the people, the French, that live in the surrounding villages and towns there. And how they lined the roads with flags and waving, blowing kisses. I don't know how many of you have been to Normandy. If you can travel there, go. And I say that because it really is not in our distant past. And I think that it is instructive to each one of us to walk that cemetery. They were 16, 17, 18, 19 years old, the majority. And they lived very short lives. They didn't get to live their hopes and their aspirations and their dreams. They were kids. There are brothers buried next to brothers. There are fathers buried next to sons. And I think for, you know, all of the issues that we're going to talk about, and I've said at town hall meetings and telephone town hall meetings, our country is undergoing, I believe, a real stress test. A lot of people are stressed as well. But our democracy is, I think, undergoing a stress test. And it's a burdensome thing that people are carrying. I carry it, I know you do as well. But I think it's important to always remember them and what they gave and what other generations have done. So this is our time. This is our time about what we can do for our country. And they paid the ultimate price. There were a handful of veterans that had traveled from different states, from across our country to Normandy. If you watched the ceremony on TV, they were on the stage. And it was beautiful to see them and being paid tribute to. But I want you to know that the word "America," the Americans, they're sacred words to the people there. Because it was certainly with our allies. But America gave. She gave her sons. They are sleeping in that soil. We never take land from anyone, but we have the cemetery there, almost 10,000 of them. So the way I see it is, we owe them something. We owe them something. We really owe them something. That is really sacred ground. That is really sacred ground. Now, the weekend before last, I traveled to Texas. It was my second visit to two areas in Texas. One, McAllen, Texas. We flew from Washington to... Well, it's hard to get there. It traveled through, from Washington to Houston, an overlay there, then to McAllen. In fact, we couldn't land because the vice president was there. And the airspace has to be clear for the president, the vice president. So we had to wait for him to take off. And then we were able to land. And then we got in in the evening. But from about 7:30 in the next morning on Saturday, a week ago this Saturday, our day was very, very full. We had 10 members of Congress from different parts of the country that were part of the delegation. And then in the afternoon, we drove to Brownsville, Texas. Now, McAllen, the first place we were at, why did we go there? It's not a tourist spot, let me tell you that. But it is the largest operation for Customs and Border Control. The largest one in the country. And Brownsville is a large port of entry. And so if you want to ask me questions about the trip, I just want to... There are two things that stand out to me. Two things that stand out. The conditions under which human beings are being held. And we do have standards in our country. In fact, there is a law relative to children. Children cannot be detained for any longer than 72 hours. But from a human standpoint, it's very difficult to see human beings in cages. Let me just say that to you. And the children are not a threat to our national security. They're not. And the first place that we went to were the jail cells where there were young men. These jail cells are built to hold maximum 10. Eight would be a lot in a cell. And there were 40, 42 in each. You know, I mean, the stench, because there isn't, there's really a lack of hygiene, no showers, cold food. The lights are on 24 hours a day. They can't sit, they can't lie down. I mean, they were all standing like this. They were putting pieces of paper against the windows, saying, "Help me." Others had a number for the number of days or weeks they were there. From there, we went to a very large, it's a warehouse where these cages are. And small children. And they have absolutely nothing to do. They sit on the floor or they pull up those, it looks like aluminum foil, but it's a Mylar blanket. Then there are older children that are separated by sex and then adults. In that warehouse, they did have washing machines, they had some showers. But again, the standards for the agency are not being followed because they're holding people much longer than they're supposed to. And, you know, some helped, signs up, help me. And then the little children sitting on the floor. And so I bent down to talk to them. They don't have toys, there's not like a little TV where they can watch the children's programming. Nothing like that. And so I bent over to talk to some of them. And I had my hands up against the, it's like cyclone fencing, except it's covered too. That's why it's called a cage. And one of them said, "Can I go home with you? Can I go home with you?" So the other part of it that I want you to know about is, we went to a respite center in McAllen that a nun and Catholic charities and other charitable organizations are operating. And that, to me, was like the shining bright light. Because when I saw what all of these volunteers were doing and what this nun sister, Norma Pimentel is her name. And she's moved several times because there are more and more refugees presenting themselves at the border. But I thought, they are getting anyone that comes, and she doesn't turn anyone away. They are seeing the goodness and the decency and the compassion of people of our country. And that was really very beautiful. We met with the families there. Now, to a person, and I think because there's so much noise that's going on, and the reporting and fighting and horrible things being said about people and all of that. To a person that I met in terms of the families, we had an interpreter. So Sister asked someone to speak from Honduras, someone to speak that had fled El Salvador, and someone to speak that had fled Guatemala. And to a person, they were all from the Northern Triangle in Central America. And that was a big lesson for me to learn. It was a big lesson for me to learn because of the violence, the unspeakable violence. One of the mothers who had two children with her, again, through the interpreter, I asked her to tell me her story. And she told me where she had fled. She still has a lot of family there. She had a son that, I think she said, was maybe 10 or 11 years old. And the gangs kept trying to get him to join. And he kept resisting, he kept resisting. You know what they did to her son? They cut him up and left him at her doorstep. So it is, when the word "violence" is used, I mean, this is very real. And their journey is a nightmare. Because these coyotes are, they're bad characters. They're just bad characters. And they sell everything that they have, their wedding rings, their everything, to pay them, to have them help guide them here. And then they present themselves at the border as asylum seekers. I think that you know that we have laws on asylum in our country. And there's, we have a huge problem because there are so many. This has turned into a humanitarian crisis with people being brought in and detained. But they really should be vetted and to have judges there. We need hundreds of judges in order to process people. And there has to be a voting process. Because there are some people that would like to come into our country that have bad records, and we can't have that. But there is a process, except the process isn't working. And the agencies between the Border Patrol people, the ICE people, Health and Human Services, those responsible for the children, the left hand does not know what the right hand is doing. The left hand does not know what the right hand is doing. It is, they get orders one day from the White House and they all try to catch up to that order. But it doesn't work with the other agency that has to take over some of the responsibilities. It is, and of course, the people that are there are paying the price. And honestly, you know, there are a lot of things that are being said about the people that work in these agencies. And there are examples that, where I think they should just be fired because of their conduct. But I saw a lot of people working very hard, trying, trying their best. But Border Patrol agents are not trained to change diapers, you know? And a lot of them are a little older, so they're not like the young dads, right? Young dads that are here who do change diapers. But the older dads didn't take that responsibility on. So I think, number one, that we need to really redirect ourselves to the core of the issue and what's producing the number of people that are fleeing to our border. And that is the violence in that triangle. And it's unfortunate that the president has cut the funding. I think it needs to be increased. I think the idea that we really go to the root cause is very, very important. That's one of the things that we can do. We need comprehensive immigration reform. And I don't know when that will happen because it's, I think my Republican friends are, they've made it known. Although, to the credit of senators, eight of them, and this was a handful of years ago, they passed a bipartisan comprehensive bill that had, for my taste, it had too much money for the border. But I would have voted for it. The bill was sent to the House and both Speaker Boehner and Speaker Ryan wouldn't take it up. And we had the votes for it. All the Democrats would have voted for it. We knew who the Republicans were. They just didn't want their names to go out there because they would have been catching a lot of help. And that's understandable. So, you know, that was an opportunity squandered. God rest his soul, Senator McCain was one of the four Republicans that worked on it. And as I said, they called it the Gang of Eight. There were four Democrats, four Republicans. So, you know, what we do and what we don't do, there are always consequences to it. And in this case, it's an opportunity squandered. It's my understanding that Ellen, am I see her? Where is there? There's her, right here in the front row. Ellen, stand up. She's a councilwoman here in Mountain View. Thank you for the confidence. Painty, I don't know if you can all see it, but Dimitri. Now, I want to see if I, this is not an easy name to pronounce. Janis Kavitch. Is it right? Dimitri, stand up. He's the artist that gave this work. I told Dimitri that we're going to, with pride, put his latest piece of art in the district office for everyone they've met. Thousands of people come through that office. So they're going to see the magnificence of your work. So with that, let's start taking questions. And I'll do my best to take as many as I can and answer them. If I don't get to your question, it doesn't mean that you will not hear directly back from me. I think you all know that. We've been around long enough where you've been to meetings and you know that you get a... I never send canned mail. I don't say, "Thank you for coming to the meeting. Anytime we can help you, sincerely." I don't do that. If you ask about Section 203 of the trade agreement or whatever, you will get a direct answer back from me. So thank you. It's a cool house. Looks like a Mormon rock wall painting. It's great, it's great. Okay, so are we doing microph... Who's, yes. We're going to start on this side, all right?
So my colleague Crystal over there on the other will also be taking questions.
So you're starting?
Yes. Remember, state your name and the city where you're from. I will be holding the microphone so Crystal, so please don't try to take away.
Hi, my name is John. I'm a resident in Mountain View. And I'm a member of DSA, Democratic Socialists of America. So we held a small but respectable rally at your office and urging you to support Ramila J. Apples' 1384 H.R., the single payer bill. And we heard back from you that it's not customary for committee leadership to support. We hear you, and our response is, "That's not enough." We need you to be a leader for single payer, universal health care. And we want you to be a leader. We want to say that our congressional district is the leader on healthcare, universal, single payer in America. So my question is, how will you plan to become the leader for universal, single payer healthcare?
Many constituents on the whole issue of healthcare. The whole issue, very broadly. Not just Medicare for All, but the price of prescription drugs and bringing that price down. And I'm sorry that you don't think of me as a leader in healthcare because I have spent probably 80% of my elective time in office, 10 years on the Board of Supervisors, and now in the House of Representatives on healthcare. So I'm not a newcomer to the issue. I understand what you want. I think that, and I understand why people are so frustrated with what they might have, what they don't have, and the consequences of it. I'm not making up an excuse when I say that I don't cosponsor a multiplicity of bills on one subject matter because the people that are going to be coming before the committee want me to be neutral. They want me to be fair. If I already have my mind made up about something, why have a hearing? Why have a hearing? You wouldn't think that that was very fair if you were coming before me. You'd say, "Why aren't you open to all of the ideas?" Now, for the benefit of everyone else that isn't working on Medicare for All and the J. Apples bill every single day, there are six bills altogether. The supporters of this particular bill have chosen this one. They love it the best. Essentially, the other bills don't exist, but they do. So I have... What I've worked on all of my adult elected life has been the following. Healthcare for everyone. Universal healthcare. Anyone that's followed what I've done, and maybe there are only five people that have, it's more than that. That has always been my goal. That has always been my goal. How can it fall to be without healthcare? No one, no one. And it is, it's respecting the dignity of each human being. Otherwise, you're throwing on a scrap heap of humanity. So whether it has been strengthening Medicare, and I've lived through some, gone through some riptides in the Congress in the attacks on Medicare. Expanding Medicaid. The expansion of Medicaid was really the foundation for the ACA. And right here in our congressional district, there are over 100,000 people that are insured through that as a result of that work. And that wasn't easy to do. We voted for a public option. We got a public option in the House. The Senate didn't put it in. So I know what the push and the pull on this is. On the one hand, it's, you're saying you want everyone insured. I'm with you 5 billion percent. I think that there are some issues that still need to be dealt with relative to the bill because there are constituents that have health insurance. They like what they have, and they want to keep it. They get it where they work. I don't want to take that away from them, you see? And so I'm concerned about that. And that's 180 million people in our country. Now, if we were starting from scratch to build a universal system in our country, it wouldn't be all these different parts and pieces. But we're not going to take everything down and start from scratch. And in many ways, that's what that bill does. But it has everything in it, from the minute you're born until you die. Everything is covered. Everything is covered. We don't know what it's going to cost yet because the bill has, they call it SCORING, where the Congressional Budget Office examines the policy and then they put the numbers next to it in terms of how much it costs. And then, of course, it's up to the Congress to figure out how you're going to pay for it. And I know some people have said, "Well, unravel the tax bill and the whatever." You know, it's, there are many ways to someday, and that's the responsibility of the Congress. So on hearings, I believe that there will be hearings. There have already been three. But we have to get done what we promised the American people we would do. And that's exactly the work that I'm doing. Today is the 200th day since we moved into the majority. 200 days and over 200 bills not only had hearings, they had markups, they were voted on from subcommittees, sent to full committees, sent to the floor of the House. And now we're waiting for the Senate to take them up, which is another story. But some people say, "Well, why are you killing yourselves legislating?" Because that's what we're supposed to do. That's what we're supposed to do. That's what we're supposed to do. So, I want you to remember that I love your passion. I love your passion. Passion is really the fuel that gets people going to get things done. And so, at some point, we will have hearings. We've got to get the price of prescription drugs down. We've passed at least ten bills. You can ask me about some of them or all of them. But they close a lot of the loopholes in the drug supply chain. And believe me, in each layer is like a little racket tucked into it. So, we have to clean that out. But I think the largest... What will have the biggest impact on bringing the cost of drugs down is direct negotiations with the pharmaceutical companies. And if you're gassed about that or wondering about it, we already do it with the Veterans Administration, and it works very well. We already do it with TRICARE, which is the military health care system for those who wear the uniform and their families. And that works very well. I think we should put the VA, TRICARE, and most of it could be Medicare Part D because that's where the real money is. There's a lot of money in that. So, that's where the savings. And of course, any of the bills that we did, we wanted all of the savings to go to the patient, to the consumer, not to the provider, the insurers, but to the patient. So, that's the structure of the bill. So, I think that's the way it should be. So, that's what I have to say about that. All of you that are here, thank you. I've met with many of the organizations that are supporting Medicare for All. And I thank you. I thank you for what you're doing. You want something that is really transformative for people. It's a good thing for people in our country, for everyone to be insured. We just have to figure out the best way to get there. And I know that you won't rest until you get your own way, you know? But my mother taught me, and it came to full realization when I got to the Congress, you don't get your own way. You don't get the full oath. You don't get a hundred percent. So, but it's a very important journey for the people of our country. Okay, who's next?
Hello. I'm Melissa Purcell. And I'm from Palo Alto. And I've been a supporter since nineteen eighty-eight.
Oh, my goodness.
Campaign for you with the campaign.
Oh, my goodness.
I don't know if you remember that.
I sure do.
And I actually distributed them in this neighborhood. I have a son who was actually interned for you when he was in high school. And that son is now a first lieutenant in the Army.
Isn't that so?
And my passion is peace. I'm very concerned. And I know that... I'm pretty sure you voted for the common gets bill.
Well, I helped create it. I helped to create it.
So, I don't know if others know about it, but it's to prevent... And I'm... Please correct me. But it's to prevent the president from being able to declare war with Iran.
Yes.
And I'm very concerned about what's been happening these past few days. So, I want to know what we can do.
Well, I think... Thank you. Thank you for what you did and for sticking with me because we didn't win in eighty-eight. And that video, I still have a copy of it. I have a copy of it. Do you know, that campaign was so unique because of the way we chose to communicate with people. It was... It was a big VCR. VCR. And but imagine a hundred thousand of them were distributed to people. You were one of them. And the Kennedy School at Harvard chose that campaign as a permanent case study. So, students are still studying that campaign. Isn't that something for its uniqueness? So, thank you. Now, what... Melissa, is it? Yes. What Melissa is referring to is the following. Back in March of this year, I wrote legislation, and it attracted eighty cosponsors, which is a lot. I didn't think that that many members would sign on to it because it... Well, it could be controversial for them depending on their congressional district. But in any rate, the bills that I wrote disallowed the president from expending any dollars to go to war against Iran. I heard the drum beat, and it was very troubling to me. And, you know, he has John Bolton, and he has Secretary State, Mr. Pompeo, who was colleague in the House. And I think it's fair to say that certainly Mr. Bolton... I think if you go back at least twenty-five years, every time there has been some kind of international challenge, he always says, "You solve it militarily." Every single time. I mean, he's... You have to give him credit for being consistent. I don't believe the American people want another war waged in the Middle East. We're still paying a big price. That legislation was used as the template for an amendment to the National Defense Bill. And Ro Khanna on that committee offered the amendment. And of course, I spoke on it because it's, you know, the template was my legislation. And it passed by a very wide margin. And we have Republican support for it as well. So, I think that, you know, we're subjected to all kinds of things in the news every single day. But when it comes to this, when the tensions are heightened, one side says this and does that, the next side says this and does that, that there, the higher the tensions, war room there is for a mistake. For a mistake. And Iran is a... It's a real country. It's not like Iraq. Iraq, the lines were drawn by Winston Churchill. They don't... I've been to Iraq many times. And I've reported all those trips to you as my constituents to visit with our troops and to see what was happening on the ground firsthand. They don't think of themselves as nationalists of their country. They identify themselves by tribe. But Iran, that's not the case. It's a very sophisticated society, highly educated, and a very sophisticated military force there as well. So, you know, it really is... It's so... We made such an important decision that was taking us into a future that would keep Iran their agreement and our allies. And our allies. It was not an easy agreement to put together. And that was the, you know, the JPCOA, the Iran deal. As soon as this man became president, he said it was the Lutweli campaign and said it's the worst deal that anyone has ever negotiated and vowed to pull out and then announced that he was pulling out. And did that have everything in it? No. It wasn't negotiated to have everything in it. But it was to keep Iran from developing nuclear weapons. And now, look what's happening. So, you know, I mean, the proof is in the pudding. But I said that every... I just wish the administration would have some cool heads to keep the rhetoric at bay and not to provoke. There isn't anyone in the Congress, myself included, that carries a brief for the government of Iran because there are many things that they have done that are just playing bad. All right? I'm not talking about the people of the country. I'm talking about the government. But when you keep provoking, you see the tensions heightened. So, I think that going back to the legislation that was passed is a very important foreign policy item that we voted on. And I'm glad that it was bipartisan. I think it's going to be taken up in the Senate as well. So, that really fire... Excuse my English. Fires a shot across the president's bow of the ship of state that the Congress... The Congress, in, I believe, Article Two, Section Eight, the framers said, "Only Congress can declare war." And we've been operating on this authorized use for military force, the AUMF, going back to George W. Bush. And other presidents, Democrat, Republican, just keep... They keep using that without coming to the Congress. This pulls up the emergency brake and says, "No, we're not doing this anymore." So, thank you. Thank you for your work for peace. Thank you. Okay, this one.
Oh, hi Congresswoman Asher. My name is Alicia Zhao from San Jose. And you saved my life almost twenty years ago from a Chinese jail. And just I remember that just because I had dinner with a friend from China who practiced Kharabong, so religious practice. And I was in prison in jail with forty prostitutes and inmates. So, when you described the situation at the border, I could relate to that. So, I'm here today with my family. And I'm married with our son. He's eleven years old. I want him to meet you, to thank you. And I also was reading about your newsletters. And you mentioned about you introduced a legislature of the Foreign Entity Reform Act. And I think in your newsletter, you only mentioned about Russia. And I was wondering if you're aware of that the China, the Chinese Communist Party, spent ten billion dollars a year on propaganda in the United States to influence our policies, our communities. And how would you deal, address issue of not just the Foreign Agent Registration Act, but also like website and social media and, you know, utilizing the American newspaper to pay for the ads to get that propaganda through to our public?
Well, first of all, thank you for coming, for driving up from Santa Day. And it's wonderful to see you and see your family and eleven-year-old son. Life is good in America. Thank God for this country, right? But you introduced legislation, and it... First of all, I'm aware of a lot that takes place around the world, certainly with China. I served on the House Intelligence Committee for almost a decade. And so, many of these things are not new. And so, I am aware. And it is... You know, we refer to China today as if we're going to, you know, it's a big market, and it's like going to Paris and going shopping or something. It's a communist country. Everybody has to remember that. It's a central government that runs and owns everything. And there isn't any freedom of expression there, and there isn't any freedom of religion as she's testament to, jailed for because of her faith. The bill that I introduced, I'm very disturbed about the following. And it does have to do with Russia, but it would be China as well. But what prompted it was two communication firms of the Russians, RB and RT, the telecommunications firms. They have to be registered as foreign agents. But that's where the government stops. But the rest of us don't know that. So, if they are airing programming that is propaganda, I think that our broadcast laws should require that they be listed as foreign agents that are talking to us because it's propaganda that they're putting out. So, that would apply to China as well. The larger and even larger issue is what happens to our elections and the interference in our elections and the propaganda that is fed. I don't know if any of you... I haven't been turning my TV set on. I just can't take it anymore. I have enough to worry about. I want to take good care of my constituents. But some days, I think, is kind of the day of rest, right? So, I turned something on last night, and it had... It was the story, book, verse, and chapter of what took place in the 2016 elections. And it is really quite... It's so chilling. Number one, I think it was an outright attack, an attack on our country, an attack on our democracy. And we've differed around in the Congress for two years. Now, we're in the majority. So, we've passed legislation to harden the election and the election apparatus. Every vote has to count. Every vote needs to be counted. We need paper evidence of the votes. But make no mistake about it, that those that really have no love for America, they're doing it right. They're busy putting out their propaganda right now. And I think the other side of it, you're asking Congresswoman Lofgren and I are just about ready to launch our legislation. We've been working on it since January on the whole issue of privacy, how platforms are... How what we... When we use a platform, what does that mean? If you're on Facebook, if you use Google, did you know that there's a third party where... That buys your information? And you can be targeted? I mean, it really is something that has turned out to be perverse. There are good things. But we're addressing some of the things that you talked about in that bill. We've done our draft. We've put it out to academicians, all the stakeholders. I think we sent it out to a hundred, hundred and fifty people because we want feedback. But we need major legislation in Congress that addresses that. And I think that representing the good part of Silicon Valley, that a lot of people are going to pay attention to that, that we're willing to take it on because it's not easy to take on businesses right in your own backyard. I'm not looking to put them out of business. I just want them to straighten their businesses out. I also have one more thing, and that is that these social media platforms were used to damage our democracy. And I think you feel the same way as I do. You've crossed a major line when you do that. I think every American company owes something to America. They wouldn't be successful if they weren't operating here. And so, I think when you start with that, that it was used to damage our democracy, we have to do something about it. Okay, a sec.
Hi. John from Mountain View.
What's your first name when I'm in here?
John.
John, hi, John.
With this Wednesday, with Special Prosecutor Robert Mueller testifying in Congress, as well as the most recent revelations from the Michael Cohen case and the most recent tweets and recent statements by President Trump, I was wondering when you might be for the impeachment hearing.
It's one of the most often asked questions of me. I haven't called to... Called for impeaching the president yet. Just curiosity. I'm here to explain things to you. To be accountable to you. How many of you have read the report?
All of them.
Isn't that wonderful? Isn't that great? I think of the Mueller report as the book. And I think this Wednesday will be the movie. Most people have not read the book or the report. And we don't even have the full report yet. Members of Congress, imagine that. Now, I've seen some of the redactions that were removed, but still, major redactions have been retained. And people ask me, "Well, why do you even mention that?" Well, I mention that because if you don't have the underlying documents... The underlying documents is the... is the evidence that Robert Mueller came up with. All right? So if you're going to prosecute a case, you need to have the evidence. Now, do I think the second volume that he produced in his report on obstruction of justice, the ten items, those are, those are weighty. Those are, they really are weighty. Pardon me? It's what? Well, obstruction of justice is pretty serious. So, well, wait a minute. Talk to you about it or? Well, let me, let me just share this with you. I'm not, I don't throw red meat out there to talk to people, to jazz up coverage for myself in representing you. And I'm measured. I have a lot of strong emotions about Donald Trump. No, it's not something to laugh about. I think that the country is, and our democracy is practically under siege at this point. But my emotions cannot take me for a ride to impeachment. I want to see, no, I don't say that for applause. We do not unravel elections in this country easily. And that's the way it should be. That's the way it should be. A, because we're a democracy. Even though he doesn't understand what democracy really is. I don't think he's even read the Constitution. And if he has, I don't think he understands it. We take our Constitution seriously. Now, the process for impeachment is, there have to be hearings. And surprise of surprises, Congressional Research told me when I made the inquiry, there isn't any difference between an impeachment inquiry or an inquiry about impeachment, however you want to phrase it, and the Judiciary Committee holding the hearings on all of the wrongdoing and subpoenaing, issuing subpoenas for the witnesses to come and answer the questions that the House of Representatives on behalf of the people of our country has to establish. Now, Mr. Mueller is not coming of his own accord. I think you all know that. We had to issue a subpoena. Now, people say, well, what if they don't pay attention to the subpoenas? Well, we go to court right away and we've won. So this needs to be taken step by step. People say, well, you know, I would sound to remember Watergate. Watergate did not happen in three and a half months. It just didn't. It took over two years. And what really broke the dam was when they found that there were tapes, went to the Supreme Court. Supreme Court said those tapes need to come out. And then it all fell apart. And the leadership of the Congress, the Republican leadership of the Congress, at the eleventh hour, went to the White House and said to Mr. Nixon, it's over. You don't have the votes. But that wasn't something that happened overnight. So where am I? Where am I? All options are on the table. I haven't removed anything from the table. But I want to hear what Mr. Mueller has to say and for the witnesses that are needed to come before the Judiciary Committee on behalf of the American people. We're not doing this for ourselves, by the way. The House of Representatives is the House of the people. No one can be appointed to the House of Representatives. They can to the Senate, they can to the Supreme Court, they can for the presidency, but not the House of Representatives, not the House of Representatives. So I'm waiting to see what they bring forward. And this is also understand, it is not, this type of undertaking relative to impeachment is not the same as our court system in the country. Some people think it's, it's not, it's not. The framers said high crimes and misdemeanors. They left it up to a political body to define what that is. And so it is a political undertaking. There's no doubt about that. It is a political undertaking. And the politics on the other side of the dome is the Senate. The House indicts. The House does not impeach. Everybody understand that? The House indicts. It does not impeach. The House indicts, then the case goes to the Senate. The Senate holds a trial. Except the majority leader in the Senate has said, no way. So you all need to be thinking about, is it, is it worth indicting him? It's not going to go anywhere. I, you know what I think? I think beyond this, the most important thing is to impeach him if he owes. That's what I think. So. Let's hear what Mr. Mueller has to say. I'm really sorry that he needed to be subpoenaed. I'm really sorry he needed to be subpoenaed. But we did the right thing. And that's what is bringing about his testimony. And I hope it will be orderly. Most of all, I hope the American people will learn, will learn something from this and that it won't be in a form of propaganda, but that the facts and evidence and the story of what the special counsel did. So the justice people listened in years and years and years ago in the Watergate hearings. That's how they learned about it. But of course, we have a unitary media then and trust for the journalists and all that. Now, we've got a 24-hour cycle and God help us. I don't, you know, I don't think it's a blessing that we have a 24-hour cold news cycle anymore. I think it's exhausted the American people. Anyway, it's become more a form of entertainment than it is news, real journalism. Okay, this side.
Hello, Congresswoman, you sure. Like African Serb is our favorite democracy in that, like, on the topic of gerrymandering is that we're one of the few OECD countries in the world that is still happy to denigrate electoral system on all levels, on a first past the post system, also here now, and we undertake all system. We're like, we only have one member. I think there's like a spoiler effect. But like, most of these OECD countries have like these proportional representation systems and more like, and more people type voting and there's a higher voter turnout.
So tell me what your question is. Is it about gerrymandering?
Yeah, kind of like that.
Yeah. I've got good news for you. The very first bill we passed in January outlawed gerrymandering. And what we did in that legislation was the following, was to use California as the model for the rest of the country. I just heard on my car radio yesterday when I was coming back from Mass, a public service announcement inviting citizens to apply to the Citizens Commission. Because that Citizens Commission is the group that draw, will draw the new lines after the census is taken. You know, we take a census every 10 years, kind of like Mary and Joseph. They were going to their town, right? Where their, it is. They were taking, Caesar was taking a census then. And at any rate, we have, the voters put that reform in. The politicians are not the ones that did it. Because it really is the singularly, I think, most highly political undertaking that takes place. And Democrats, Republicans, they fight like hell to be in the majority in the state legislatures and the governorships. And so that's how the lines are drawn. But not any longer in California. I think there's good news in several states too. There are many, in several states, the people of the state have organized and are getting measures on a statewide ballot to outlaw gerrymandering in their state and have a commission similar to what we do here in California. That will go a long way. That is, that's real, that's real small D democratic reform. And I'm proud of the H.R. One. When you go home, look up H.R. One. There are a lot of parts of it. And it is, it's a bill that strengthens our democracy. It really rewrites all the, and puts in place all the ethics reforms that we've wanted. It outlaws the dark money of the secret PACs that are still in existence as a result of Citizens United. It has a lot of parts in it. And one section of it deals with gerrymandering. So I'm happy to report that to you. I think a lot of, you know what? That really is so aggravating to me is that we're working so hard to produce excellent legislation that will walk into people's lives, to approve people's lives, to strengthen our democracy, all of those things. You never hear anything about it in the news. People just don't know. You think that they would report and tell some positive things in the news. We've got some news people here. Maybe they'll run it. At any rate, I was talking to the legal wing voters about it and they're, they're on it. They're contacting a lot of news outlets and making a request. It's important for people to know what the Congress is doing. Agree, disagree, but they, at least the people of our country should know that the Congress is, especially the House of Representatives, is producing. And we are. Okay, this side. Yes.
Good evening, Congresswoman. Thanks for holding. It's about the same. My name is Tim. I live right here in Mountain View.
What's your first name?
Tim.
Tim.
Like, we need your constituents. I work in the high-tech industry. So my question is about Huawei and 5G technology. Have you, on your committee assignment on energy and commerce, seen any information that confirms that Huawei actually is doing something nefarious with 5G? Or are you aware that your colleague, Schiff, on the Intelligence Committee, has seen any information provided to him by the Intelligence Committee that says that Huawei is indeed a threat on 5G? Or is this just garbage being played by the Trump administration with regards to China trade policy?
I know a lot about Huawei. And I served on the House Intelligence Committee for almost a decade. And there were very few people that had even heard that word. And I waved a lot of flags and said, we have to pay attention to this. We have to pay attention to this because it is directly related to our national security. When our country was attacked, there was something that we had in place that was the shining object. And it was our telecommunications system. Everything wrote on that. Everything wrote on it. That was one of the most important assets we had. And boy, did we make use of it on the heels of nine 11. And so I'm not at liberty to go into what I know about Huawei. But there is a lot to be concerned about. I don't agree with Donald Trump on anything. But maybe a little corner of it is Huawei. I can't tell you because I don't know right now about, I'm on the telecommunications and technology committee in the House. But what you're raising, I think, is in the intel community relative to 5G. I hope it's not so. But I have not, let me put it this way. I have not been a fan of Huawei for many, many years. Many years. And I think I have very good reasons for it. And there are others in previous administration that when they, when they have the close look at what they were doing, that they were concerned as well. So.
But do you know, Congresswoman, has the Intelligence Committee been provided with?
I don't know that. I don't know. I could ask Adam Schiff if they're examining it. He may, members that serve on the Intelligence Committee are, if you spill something, they say there's a, there's a, a, a poster when you walk into the offices where the Intelligence Committee meets and it says, loose lips sink ships. And you can be prosecuted. You can be prosecuted if you let something go. So I don't know whether he would tell me that or not. But I'll ask him. I'll ask him. And then I'll ask him if I can say it publicly. I think it's an excellent question. Because 5G is, that's a race that we need to win. It's a race we need to win.
No American companies in the race, unfortunately.
Not yet. Although some of the, some of the providers are taking out full-page ads and making people think that 5G is like tomorrow and that they're the only one that's going to bring it to you. So, but we're living in an age of enormous exaggerations. But thank you for your question. Thank you. Yes.
Hey, my name is Mike.
Hi, Mike. Where do you live?
Campbell.
Oh, that's great. Oh, it's a wonderful community. Your vice mayor is here.
Yeah, I saw that.
You have any problems, come on up and talk to us.
So I'm a millennial, also veteran of the US Supreme Court and served under Donald Trump.
Thank you. Thank you.
And so I was, you know, served in the West Pacific during the whole fire in the U.S., we were gearing up for war. So I'm very concerned about the direction of our country. So there's a lot of millennials with our good friends in the DSA. And I'm very, very concerned about the party's ability to beat Donald Trump in this fracture. So my question to you is, what specifically are you doing to reach across to this divide within the party, to actually build a cohesive party that is going to beat Donald Trump?
Excellent question. Something happened in November of 2018. And I think that, I think a lot of people, you know, been there, done that. But I think we need to take a deep breath and reappreciate what people did. A lot of people, millions of people, worked very hard to bring that, bring about that result. And I say that because it was beyond the usual pitch that goes on. Most people, midterms are very low turnouts. People are not interested in them. They're not sexy. You know, there may be, every once in a while, there's something that gets people ginned up. But midterms have low turnouts, not the last one. And so what did I do? I mean, I invested in a lot of candidates and traveled to their districts if they wanted me to. And I had to go and plant myself somewhere where I'm not advised. And so that is not just what we did inside the Democratic Caucus. But the Democratic Caucus, in many ways, led the effort with Nancy Pelosi. I have to tell you that. I mean, we, I think that all of the work that we did in policy planning and what we would put out to the American people, what we would do if they elected us, and they were the issues that people identified with. The number one issue in every single congressional district in the country, I will go, right, white, pink, blue, purple, green, I don't know whatnot, number one issue domestically was healthcare. And we made promises on that and we're working to keep them, bring the price of prescription drugs down and a whole host of things with those number one issue. So what, now we're looking at 2020. I want to share this with you because I think that we're kind of chipped away at every day and it's depressing in plain English. People lie. We have people in the government that hate the government. We have people in the government that hate the government and stuff. They leave because they don't have any ethics. The unraveling of decades of environmental progress. And now poison is being emitted, and mercury is going to be allowed to be used, that eats away at children's brains. And the administration announced last week that they're going to allow this on the market. So let me just, the way I would put this is the following. In politics, politics is about addition. It's about addition. My friend talked about working in an effort in 1988, and then he won in 92, thanks to so many of you. The first telephone calls that I made the next day in the morning were to people that didn't support me. And I said, "Now, I represent everyone. I represent everyone." So in politics, you have to do addition. The president's numbers have not moved. He's solid 35%. I mean, rock solid. They're not going anywhere. No, they really aren't. They're not going anywhere. You know, bless their hearts. I never attack people that support someone. I don't think we should do that. I wonder why they support him, but, but I'm not going to attack them. That's their choice. But there are so many other people in this country. So even if he gets like to 38, 39, let's, let's just go at the hard, hard rock cafe, the 35%. Where would you rather be, 35 or with the 65? What has to happen is that people vote. I, I think, I wish I could find the words that would be so magical that all of a sudden, everyone in the country would stand up and understand how powerful each person is. They use that power, they go out to vote. We can change the country. And I don't say this as a Democrat. I think this is a different kind of time. I think this is a completely different kind of time. I don't know what, I don't know how he got to be the way he is. I think he's broken from inside. I don't know how he was raised. I don't know what happened. But I think that's what makes the man dangerous. And so the American people are, are, are going to decide this. People say, "Well, who are you for for president? Oh, my God, the Democrats have 20 people." Great, we have. Look at all the talent there is. They have choices. If there was one, everybody would be complaining. Believe me, the Democrats would be complaining. So I don't view it that way. I see 2020 as an opportunity for the people of our country. Because I think that our democracy is, is so precious. And going back to my opening remarks about Normandy, they paid a price. They gave their lives. So we can't get up and go out and vote? When I say we owe them something, we really owe them something. They were the trustees of our democracy at that time. We're the trustees now. We are. We can't leapfrog over this. We can't go and hide from it. We have to love it and cherish it and say, "We're going to protect it." Because there's an 11-year-old here. And that child is going to inherit what we produced for the next generation. So I, I don't, I, I, I think I see it differently. I am an optimist, but I'm not a cockeyed optimist. I'm very practical. And I can be hard on my own side, you know, and what they do and how they're doing it and all of that, all this kerfuffle about the, you know, the freshmen and that. You know what? They're brand new. They just got there. I don't think any of them have ever cast a vote before. And you know what? They're all different. They come from different districts. They are different colors. They are different backgrounds. They have different views. What's views in Congress? You know, I, I, I may not agree with all of them on one thing or on 17 things. I don't know them well enough to say very much where I agree or disagree. But you know, we're getting, we're going, running down rabbit holes. That's not the debate in the country, I don't think. Is it, is it a source of embarrassment and a source of deep hurt that the President of the United States would speak the way he speaks? We want to be proud of our president. We want our president to be a role model for our children and our grandchildren. And America has been blessed with, with honorable men that have served, whether they were Republicans or Democrats. They served the country. We disagreed on policies and whatever, but they were honorable people. So we have to show what our honor is about. That's what we need to do. That's what we need to do. We have a big responsibility. Just when you were, you signed up and you went to serve, and you gave all of yourself to that. That's what we, for your country. That's what we have to do. That's what we have to do. And you know what? No excuses from anybody. I'm not in the mood for excuses. I really am not. We, we're being called. We're being called in the United States. Can I answer your question? It's about addition. Okay? It's about addition. It's about addition. And if he hasn't added anything to that, maybe it'll go up a little bit, but not much. I think people want someone in the White House that they, that they respect. They may not agree with them, but they want to be able to respect them and know that this democracy is safe in their hands. Okay, next one.
My name's Chen Zhang. I live in Mountain View. I immigrated from China 20 years ago. I'm here, it's not a question, it's rather a little thank you speech. This, this past Saturday, July 20th, marked the 20th anniversary of Fang Gong's peaceful resistance to Chinese Communist Party persecution. And your office has asked a lot. My close friend, Cecilia Liu, three years ago, her father was sent to jail in China due to that he practiced Fang Gong. And I, I knew that you showed your concern, you wrote to the Chinese Embassy to inquire for this. So thank you very much. So here, I just wanted to, you know, do a quick brief. Fang Gong is a very ancient yoga-like exercise, really in Chinese traditional, in universal of truth, compassion, tolerance. But due to its popularity, Chinese government launched persecution against this practice 20 years ago. And the Chinese government also extended the persecution through propaganda to the worldwide, using, you know, like many international media outlets, repeated the narrative.
Tell me what your question is.
So the question is rather, it's not a question, it's to, I, I, I want to urge you to continue your support, to continue help to fight for the right of Fang Gong practitioners to freely practice their faith in China. And because up to today, there's still a huge number of Fang Gong practitioners are being jailed in China or labor camps. And millions of people have yet to awaken to the nature of communism and the Chinese government.
I think, I think this evening has been instructive for a lot of people because more than one has spoken about it. One of the, one of the great, great values of our country is freedom of religion. My father used to say just a few words in the Constitution have prevented so much bloodshed because you see what happens in the name of religion and how people around the world are persecuted for their faith. So whether it is the Christians that have been persecuted in the, in the Middle East and the work that I've done with many organizations to what you described with Falun Gong and so many others, these are all, they're human rights violations. And, you know, people have asked me, "Well, why, why would you care about this and try to do something about it?" Because it is one of the great values of our country. So it's not about choosing a faith because we have the separation of church and state in our country, which is so important, and we have to always guide that. But when we see that people are persecuted because of their faith any place in the world, we act on our values and we speak out and we call it out. So thank you. Thank you for your courage. Thank you for your courage. Yes, this side, okay?
So just a reminder, we have two last questions depending on the answer.
Let's, I need to talk less. So let's see how many more we can get in.
My name is Stan from San Jose.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you for being here. I have two, first, I'd like to say I really agree with you that the two main problems, or two of the main problems in the United States today is the healthcare situation and the ethical problem within the government. Having said that, I'm going to ask you a little one question.
Sure.
You get more money from the insurance company than any other member of Congress. You get more money from Big Pharma, from the drug companies, than any other member of Congress. And you just said before that you want to gradually move on healthcare. Forty-five thousand people in this country die each year without the healthcare. Would that mean that your gradual would be just 25,000 people a year die? Well, that's what, in essence, is what you're saying. When you take away womanized words and just go down to the meaning of what you're saying, that's what you're saying. And considering where a lot of your funding is coming from, I'm not saying that it's you, but it looks like that. Okay? Can you teach us that?
I'd be glad to. I'd be glad to. And at every town hall meeting, someone raises this. First of all, I think that the, the description in terms of contributions is not accurate. But I'm responsible, I'm responsible to stand before constituents and to defend or say it's not true of who has contributed to me. There's, there's no doubt about it. We have more biotechnology in our congressional district than any other place in the Bay Area, any other place in California, any other place in the country. And I've worked with them over the years. Have some of the pharmaceutical companies made campaign contributions? Yes, they have. But I don't take money from oil. I don't take, there's a whole set of outfits that I don't take money from. Now, have you looked at my voting record? Who have I voted for? Who have I voted against?
You mean what bills? For what people?
Yes, yes. I have, you know what? Facebook has supported me. Google has supported me. They are not happy with the legislation. So I think it's, wait a minute. I think it's, you promised your, you did your part. I'm going to say mine. I think that it's important to know that Anna is an independent. And I call, I think, hell is whether I think, I think something is going to help people or whether it's going to hurt them. All of the bills, all of the bills to lower the price of prescription drug, to get rid of the rackets that are tucked into each layer in the drug supply chain, where was the first committee and the first person that brought that legislation forward in the House? You're talking to her, okay? So, you know, if you want to suggest that I'm bought and paid for, I'm going to fight against that. If you're going to raise the issue that I've received contributions from, from many PACs, I have. And you know what? You know where most of that money has gone? You know where most of that money has gone? To bring new members, new people into the country. You know, the other thing is, I don't, I wish, I don't relish fundraising. I don't relish it. As a matter of fact, I don't like it. I detest it. I think we should have a publicly funded system where there's nothing. I have written legislation on it. I have fought for it. So, you know, I'm, there, in terms of contributions, the largest sums of dollars that have been contributed to me are individual donors from my congressional district. And I, I think that that's a, if you're going to talk about money, I think that that's a good part of the story. I think it's a good part of the story. So I've, yes, I've received contributions, but I've, I've never, I've never voted against the interests of my constituents. Never, not once. Not once. Not once. And especially in this area, in terms of healthcare and, and prescription drugs. And what? Well, you know, I, I think that this is a good conversation to have because you're, I think Medicare for all, and there are others that are here. There's a tendency, in terms of our passions, that if you're not in 1,000% agreement with individuals or groups or organizations, that you are one bad, awful hombre. And, you know, I, I think that we need to, I, I don't, I don't find that to be fair. I don't find that to be fair. I think I'm thoughtful. I work really hard to try and figure out how something is going to work for people in their day-to-day lives. All right? Now, you may not care, but there are many people that have come to me and said, "I'm happy with what I have." So should I be paying some attention to what they say? I think so. I don't know what the final product is going to be, but I can tell you how, what walk-through hell it was to create the Affordable Care Act. And I just had a whole beautiful group of people in the office, and I said, "Would you just assume we throw that overboard?" And they all said yes. And I said, "Well, that's 21 million people." And millions of people that have pre-existing conditions. So, you know, it is, we have to, I'm going to do my damnedest to make sure that everyone in this country is treated the way they should be treated, a human being, and that they have healthcare coverage. Can I stand here tonight and say to you, "It's going to be exactly your plan and nothing short of that"? I can't make that promise to you. I can't make that promise to you. I can't speak for all the other people that have to vote. So, you know, I, I, I'm doing my darndest, and I, I would suggest that you take a look at my voting record. I, I think that that is, that's the, that's the line anyway. That's, that's where the waters separate, where the seas separate, is how do you vote? Members can say whatever they want to say. I want to see how they have voted. Look at my voting record. That's how I want to be judged. This side. Let's see if we can get a couple more in. Let's do this one.
My name is Jeff from San Jose.
Thanks for coming up.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the future of H R one and what's happened to it because everything in it is worthwhile, but goes to the Senate and what happens. These, all those elected officials take the oath to defend and protect the Constitution of the United States. And if people don't have a right to vote, and if other countries, China, Russia, et cetera, are, are, are improving our voting process and our elections, we need to hold them accountable. So how, how can we do that when the Senate just lets it die?
Well, thank you for raising it.